Oak Ridge High School Scholarship, and that will be presented by Commissioner Catherine Denenberg.
Well, I'll be glad to be sent here, but I was looking to see if the young lady was here, and I don't think so. So could we move on to something else?
Certainly. Next item will be the resolution honoring Clinton High School's boys' basketball team, and that was requested by Commissioner Robert McCamey.
And they're not here yet, so.
Strike two!
Can we move on to something else?
Sure.
One more, and we're going to go on today.
We'll go ahead and begin the public hearing for rezoning of property located at 2125 Lake City Highway, Clinton, Tennessee. Parcel 036.01, tax map 054. That is from an A2 rural residential district to a C1 general commercial district. And if there are no objections, I will go ahead and also, we'll have both at once, if that's acceptable. Public hearing rezoning of the property located at 1101, 1106, and 1110 Cove Lane, Oliver Springs, Tennessee, parcel 039, 052, 052.02, 052.03, and 052.04, located on the tax map 084 from A2 rural residential district to A1 agriculture/forestry district. Does anyone in the audience tonight wish to speak on any of those two rezonings during our public hearing? All right. What we'd like to do, if y'all would, you can come to the podium, state your name and address. We'll give you approximately three minutes to speak. If we have many speakers that want to speak on any of these, the only thing we would ask is that if you hear that what you were going to say was said by someone else, that you consider limiting your time. And when I let you know that we're at the three-minute mark, we'd appreciate it if you go ahead and wrap things up for us. But if you want to go first, sir, on the front row, just go ahead and come to the podium.
Richard Seaver, 1123 Cove Lane. I got a question on why this needs to be rezoned. If any of y'all have been up there and seen what I have to live beside, you wouldn't want to see what I have to look at every day. And if it's going to be rezoned to agriculture and forestry, what can you do on that property? Does anybody know?
Chris Phillips.
Is anyone from the zoning office?
Margie.
Oh, I'm sorry, Margie? Come on up, I'm sorry.
What he's trying to do is he had an illegal campground, and we made him move all the campers out. And he's trying to rezonate to allow for camper, you know, trailer park type camping area. And that is only allowed in an A1 zone. So what they're trying to do is, you know, get him to be in compliance with codes.
Okay, who's going to be over all these codes?
That's me.
That's you?
Yes.
Okay. Because, does that not have to be zoned commercial?
Mm-mm. It's agriculture. A1.
How did this become an illegal trailer park to begin with?
He had campers there, and that's not allowed as far as a camping site.
Okay.
In the A2 zone.
He got approved for three campers per septic tank.
That's through the State Health Department or the...
By Don Gill.
TDEC.
Okay, can, that's, he can't get approved if that's not an illegal campground, right?
TDEC don't have anything to do with zoning. And he can get approved for a septic, for, you know, for the campground, but he didn't go through all the hoops to make it actual campground.
All right, how many is he going to be allowed to put there?
Well, according to TDEC, three campers per site, per septic tank, and I think he has three or four septic tanks.
How many did he have on that property before?
Um, I rem, best I can remember, 21-plus.
So I can tell you right now, I mean, he's not, he's not going to comply with anything. He's going to try to, but he won't. I mean, the dollar signs really take a toe on him. And he's making, making hand over fist. And I don't, I don't begrudge any of that, not one bit. I mean, a man can make the money that he can, but it all needs to be legal.
Three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McCamey.
Yes, sir?
You said trailer park. We're talking about temporary. We're not talking about permanent structures, okay?
The travel trailers.
Okay. You said trailer park in that distance.
Yeah. He had, he had single-family dwellings, which is, single wives there at one time, and they got removed. And so we started just putting campers up there, travel trailers.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one thing.
Yes, sir.
Full disclosure, I'm business manager of our office. I've got Cassandra, my office is working closely with Margie. There's several issues down there. I don't think they'll impair the rezoning. That's a step in the right direction, but we've got a business license issue, occupancy tax issue, got state electrical violations for the hookups. So there's a lot going on, but this is the first step in making the guy legal. I just wanted you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Yeg. Anyone else wanting to speak? Go ahead, sir. Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Johnny Taylor, and I was owner of the campground. And like I mentioned to Margie, I liked just, you know, whatever I need to do to get legal. And the other gentleman there was talking about the illegal hookups and stuff, which the farm marshal come out and looked over everything. So we've removed all the wiring. You know, we had some wiring coming out of the house we had there. We've removed all of it. And he said that, you know, that's what he needed. And four septic tanks, you know. Mark, I don't know his last name, but with the septic system, he was there today.
Mark Pinlin.
Yeah. He was there today, and he said, you know, what we'd have to do to get legal, which we can use what septic tanks we got. And just like she said, you know, we can do three per tank. But, you know, we got plenty of room to add more. But he said we'd have to have a part test and stuff to do that. So, you know, just whatever we need to do to get legal, we'll get legal with it.
Any questions, Ms. Senator? Commissioner Wondell, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, how many campers are there now?
Zero. She asked us to move them, we moved them all out. Like I was telling the gentleman there today, we had trouble getting like three or four out. We had to threaten them to call the police department. They said they don't have nowhere to go, and I said, well, you can't stay here, you know, because you're going to get me in more trouble. So, yeah, there's zero there.
Any other questions? Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, in my opinion, I think that this is something that we need to pass on until other things are taken care of. Just to be sure that the proper steps are being taken and that all of the i's are dotted and t's crossed. So at this point, I will be a no vote on this rezoning.
Where, Margie?
He cannot put...
Can you come to a microphone? Thanks.
He cannot put the travel trailers there without it being zoned A2. So this is the first step that he has to have. So he is working on it, and he did, you know, remove all the motor homes that were there.
So you feel comfortable moving forward on this?
I do, yes, ma'am. Sure do.
Commissioner Creasy.
I'd like to ask our building commissioner, when this trailer park was put in, did the owner apply for a building permit or come to your office to see what necessary to put a trailer, I mean, a campground there?
No, sir, he did it all illegally, and that was...
Without asking any questions or coming and getting the rules and...
Correct. And, you know, we've been working on this for a bit, but he's finally moved everything off. He is trying to get in compliance with the codes and zoning.
But that statement then coincides with what the neighbor speaker stated, that it gives his statements a little bit more credibility, the fact that the owner didn't comply with any of the rules prior to putting that in operation.
Correct.
Now, that's an issue for me.
I understand.
Commissioner Scott.
How many trailers were there prior to this?
Okay, so let's back up. We did put the campers in. We thought we was legal because we had mobile homes in there before, so we just used the same sewer, the same electric stuff. So we thought we was, you know, we thought we was legal. We'd pull the mobile homes out, put the campers in, so we thought we was legal. But to answer your question, there was about 32, 33 there.
32 or 33?
Yeah, but then we got like seven acres. There's three and a half acres on one side, three and a half on the other side.
I don't care how many acres it was. I'm asking how many trailers are...
Yes, okay.
You had over 30 of them there.
Yes.
You're saying that you want this zoned for travel trailers?
Yes.
How many do you intend to have?
Every, I mean, we can do legally.
How many do you intend to have?
I mean...
How many septic tanks do you have?
Let's see, we got one, two, four, five on one side, and then we got like four on the other side.
And there's three per unit that are allowed?
Yes.
These will be travel trailers?
Yes.
So they will be there temporarily?
Yes.
What period of time do you expect to allow them to stay?
Okay, so they come in here to work at Y-12, K-25, instead they come to work. So usually they work 40 hours a week, Monday through Thursday. And then like Thursday, when they get off work, they go home, and then they come back like Monday night.
Does their trailer stay there while they're gone?
It does, yes.
So if someone has a contract for two years, you're going to let them stay temporarily for two years?
If we can do it legally, yes. Whatever we can do legally is what we want to do.
So as a campground, they're not camping, they're staying for extended periods of time?
Okay.
Yes or no?
Yes, yes.
I mean, are people coming in with four-wheelers to go truly camping and be there for a weekend? Or are these people that you're encouraging to hold longer?
I mean, we had both. We had some that come, like you said, ride the razors, come back and leave, you know, come back to the later date. And then we had some that stayed there, you know.
When someone pulls a trailer in, do you have them sign a lease?
We didn't, no.
Then how do we know that they're there just for a short period of time as a travel trailer?
Like I said, we'll do whatever we need to do. You know, if y'all see fit to let us do it, we'll do whatever we need to do legally.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, Commissioner Smolarski, go ahead, sir.
I have a question. You said this is the first step in the process. What is that full process, and what does taking this first step permit him to do?
The first step is rezoning it to A1 to allow for a campground area, okay? Then he would have to submit a plat showing each of the septic systems and how many trailer or travel trailers are going to be hooked up to them. And he has to have, you know, he can't do more than, per the code, or the zoning ordinance, can't do more than nine per lot. But because the TDEC says there's only three allowed per septic system, or only three per septic system is allowed at this time.
So if this were approved, what would happen then, following that? What has to happen then?
He would have to get a plat showing us, you know, where he's, the septic tanks are located and what items he's going to, where they're going to be stationed and stuff like that. It's really just a overview of the site plan, what he's planning on doing. And we will determine if he meets the minimum requirements for that. And if not, then we'll tell him he has to do this and take it back and redo the plat.
But in the meantime, could there be people on the site?
No.
No.
Absolutely not. It is zoned A2, which does not allow for campgrounds.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCamey.
Margie, you've got one more question here. Our job here tonight is to either rezone or not.
Right.
Once that's done, then it all falls back on you, and we're...
Yes, sir.
It won't come back to us for anything.
No, sir.
It's just, where he's requested his property be rezoned.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what we're talking about right now, not the trailer parks.
No, no, it has nothing to do with the trailer park.
Intended use, it's just his recommendation.
Correct. And then after that, his plat will go to the Planning Commission.
Right.
And if the Planning Commission approves it, then we'll proceed from there.
Okay.
We will keep a close eye on him.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have one other question, sir. And you may not know the answer to this. Having a campground, is there any taxing that is done where you are then required to keep an inventory of those people who have come, used your facility, and any taxes that you actually would be paying sales tax to the county? And you may not know the answer.
I don't know the answer to that, no, I do not.
Okay, but that's a question that, because I know that we've had this question about B&amp;Bs and that sort of thing, and keeping a tally on them, so that would be a question that we'll ask.
But like I said earlier, whatever we need to do legal, we'll do whatever we need to do.
I understand, and quite frankly, based on what the head of our building and zoning, I will probably go ahead. But thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. Any more questions? Thanks, sir. I'm sorry, Commissioner Scott.
No, I have a question for Margie, actually.
Okay.
Margie, by this property being rezoned, what does code enforcement... What do you have to do when it comes to it being zoned and either being a temporary housing of travel trailers or being, becoming a mobile home park? I mean, I'm sure that some of these folks will be getting mail delivered, which makes it a residence, as opposed to a temporary place to park.
There are no mail receptacles in this facility at all. And according, if I'm not mistaken, I'd have to look it up, the state law only allows you to live in it for six months? State law only allows you to live in a mobile home, as far as the travel trailer type mobile home, for six months. Anything longer than that is considered a permanent residence, and it's not considered, that is not allowed.
Is that something that your department would continue to monitor?
We would have to. Yes, ma'am.
So out of 30 units that are out there, you'll have to visit the site on a regular basis to make sure that...
There wouldn't be that many with the, with him meeting the minimum requirements. There would not be that many.
But he said that he would have as many as he would be allowed to have, and if he's got...
Right, which is three per septic tank.
He said he's got three here and another six and nine.
He's got five on one side, which is 15, and then four on the other side.
Which is 27.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then if he has more than 25 units...
Mm-hmm.
You're going to continue to monitor each unit?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Margie? It says here in the legal notice of public hearing that Anderson County Regional Planning Commission has reviewed and made the recommendation regarding the proposed amendment of the zoning resolution of Anderson County in accordance with Tennessee Code annotated 3-7-105B. So am I to interpret that, that the Anderson County Regional Planning Commission has reviewed this?
This particular zoning?
Yes.
The Planning Commission has reviewed it and has given a recommendation to, you know, rezonate.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on the rezonings of either of these properties? All right, we will go ahead and move on back to the first one, presentation of the Oak Ridge High School Scholarship. Commissioner Denenberg?
Is Paris Taylor in the audience?
There she is.
Oh, good.
Commissioner Denenberg, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Taylor? How are you?
Good, how are you?
Pretty good.
Good.
I have changed glasses so I can read this. The Anderson County Board of Commissioners established and began contributing personal funds to a scholarship fund in 1996. This fund is set up to provide a scholarship annually to a student at each of the three high schools in Anderson County. I would like to thank the Guidance Department at Oak Ridge High School for their efforts in soliciting applicants and selecting the scholarship recipient for 2022, Ms. Paris Taylor. On behalf of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, I would like to present this $500 scholarship certificate to you, Ms. Taylor. There's the good part. Your scholarship reads, "Be it resolved the 16th day of May 2022. The Anderson County Board of County Commissioners hereby awards the 26th Annual County Commission Scholarship in the amount of $500 to Paris Taylor, a senior representing Oak Ridge High School. Signed by Joshua N. Anderson, Chairman." Ms. Taylor, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Did you have family here that wanted a certificate? Okay. Would you like... Yes, come on now. That's why you got the scholarship.
I would just like to say thank you for everybody that voted me for the scholarship. I just moved here last year, and it has been an amazing opportunity to enjoy Oak Ridge High School's amazing opportunities that it has offered me. Thank you so much.
And she would like that, too.
Yes.
Is there someone here with a camera?
Yes.
Oh, true. You want one with all of them?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, Commissioner, she wants one with everybody. Then you have to come over here. Come on, children, get up.
You're fine.
Everybody say cheese!
Yes!
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, young lady.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
And the next item is a resolution honoring Clinton High School's boys' basketball team by Commissioner Robert McCamey.
I'm supposed to be here at 6:30, but I'm going to go ahead and read it.
Okay.
And I don't know, Tracy, I think, was just about at every game, and I was, too. This has been one of the most fun classes that I've ever, ever been associated with. And Tracy and I both have followed them all the way from middle school up through high school. But this was a phenomenal team. And I'll read this, "A resolution honoring Clinton High School Boys Basketball Team. Outstanding 2021-2022 season. Whereas the Anderson County Board of Commissioners would like to congratulate the 2021-2022 Clinton High School Dragons basketball team for an outstanding season. And whereas the 2021-2022 Dragons were undefeated in their home arena called the Donny Dome with a 13-0 season. Whereas the 2021-2022 Dragons held a 6-0 record in the district and overall record of 28-5. Whereas due to their accomplishments in the 2021-2022 season, Jeremiah Blavat, Rashawn Bright, Lane Harrison, Trace Thackerson were all selected for the four AAA All District and two AAA All Region Tournament teams. Whereas due to his accomplishments in the 2021-2022 season, Jackson Garner was named All Region Tournament Four AAA Co-District Player of the Year and selected to the three AAA All-State team by the Tennessee Sports Writers Association. And whereas due to the accomplishments in the 2021-2022 season, Trace Thackerson was named District Tournament Most Valuable Player. And whereas due to his accomplishments in the 2021-2022 season, Rashawn Bright was named Region Tournament Most Valuable Player. And whereas due to their accomplishments in the 2021-2022 season, Tyler Morgan and Dolly Trust were named All District Honorable Mentions. And whereas due to his outstanding leadership of the 2021-2022 Dragons, Coach Chris Lockard was named the Four AAA Coach of the Year. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, meeting the 16th day of May 2022, that we honor Clinton High School Boys Basketball Team and Coach Chris Lockard, along with his coaching and support staff, for an outstanding 2021-2022 season. Resolved, duly approved, and effective the 16th day of May 2022."
We will take a short recess, and we'll get started on our regular gen.
Mr. Chairman, he said he'd be here by 6:29.
6:29 up there.
We will come to you tonight and we thank you for all your blessings. We thank you, Lord, for salvation. We thank you for the guidance, Lord, the counseling that you give us each and every day. Please forgive us of our sins, times, Father, when we don't take that counseling, times, Lord, when we go out under our own understanding. Lord, be with us in this meeting tonight. We pray that you would be with each heart, each mind of the Commissioners, Lord of our representatives, Lord of our constituency, and, Lord, bring us all together, Father, to do what's right in your sight, all this we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will have the appearance of citizens under this portion. If anyone is here that would like to speak on an issue that is not on the agenda already, you can come up and state your name and address and you'll have three minutes. Any item that's not, not already listed on the agenda, and when, if you're here for a specific item, when we get to that, when we get to that portion, you're welcome to come up and do the, do the same. All right, we'll move on to the approval and correction. Oh, sorry. We got, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead and give your name and address.
Hello, Commissioners, I'm back. My name is Karen Rakowski and I live in Ben's Mobile Home. First thing I want to do is thank the Sheriff's Department because they're getting the trash out of there. So if the sheriff ain't here, maybe somebody can delay that message because we really appreciate him. We need to find out who's in charge of putting the street signs and some stop signs back up there. Some new emergency personnel, when they come in, they'll stop at my house or somebody else's and ask, you know, where's such and such a street? You guys tell me who I need to go after and I'll go after them because I think it's very important, you know, that they can get there. They only have a certain time. And I got a question to ask, is there a way a caution light can come in at that entrance to Ben's? Does anybody know?
They're not county roads. We're not going to post them with any kind of road signs. As far as a caution light, we can ask T.DOT to do a review of that area, but that's a good idea.
Well, then he needs to come to my house because when the vehicles drive in the ditch and they come up on my lawn and knock me out of bed one more time, I'd be knocking on Also, the streetlights, do we know who's responsible for the streetlights? Because there is one as you come in and the utility lines aren't touching it, but nobody knows if it's county, nobody knows if it's Ben's.
It's privately owned.
Yeah. So, how do we go ahead and go after him when he's not going to do nothing because he brought it out of his crack? Who do we go after?
Ma'am, we've got several cases. I'm the law director. I've got several cases in Ben's Mobile Home Park, including one against Mr. Graves. Okay, we're the ones that have the Sheriff's Department in there, asked them to patrol that area. We're the ones that have condemned at least three properties there in the past six months. We're the office that's giving you all the help.
And I thanked you guys and said you were doing a wonderful job. I didn't have a problem with that. But the burned-out trailers in there, the high grass, I mean, this is a nuisance. And, and the drug house over there right down the street, it's been a drug house for 20 years, why ain't it shut down?
Ma'am, I can't tell you that, but I know the Sheriff's Office is working on that whole project down there.
So are you the one I need to talk to?
You can call me. You've emailed me before and you can email me anytime.
I have emailed you before. Who are you?
Jay Yeager.
Oh, I don't have my glasses on, so I can't make out. Okay, I will.
You email me all you want.
Okay, just long as you answer back or else I'll be a piercing.
I've answered every email you've sent me.
That's it, that's all I got.
I'm sure Danny Phillips has probably been to most of those locations and has them in the system already, but maybe if you want to get together with Jay, he can get you Danny's contact information to check out some of those properties with the yard issues and everything. Is there anyone else that would?
Well, there's the burnt trailers in there too. Where are the kids?
All streetlights in the rural areas are probably paid for by the homeowner that's in that area and they're paid for through the utility bill. Because I have a streetlight on my property and I pay for the streetlight through my utility bill. So whoever owns that power pole where that thing is pays for that streetlight on his monthly utility rate.
Anyone else have anything that's not on the agenda they'd like to speak about? I think he's, I think he's here for the budget portion from the Sheriff's Department. All right, next, we'll move on to approval and correction of the agenda. We'll start with a consent agenda.
Let's go through that, Sheriff.
Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, I want to just make a quick announcement. We've had a lot of complaints about Channel 95 service with breaking up and mics and I'll just encourage all the Commissioners to speak into your mic tonight. And I talked to Andy. Sometimes people think Brian Young, our IT Director, is responsible for the Channel 95. I was one of those people. But no, Andy's taking care of it. Andy Garrett with Channel 95 and their teams and he's worked on it and hopefully it'll be better tonight. If there's any issues, I encourage anyone to kind of send a text, let them know, and I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Andy, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We've got a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the approval of the regular agenda. Commissioner Yeager.
Under purchasing, I'd like to add lawsuit recovery cost contract.
Okay, Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. We'll make it 5A. I'd like to do a PSA, please, a public service announcement.
Okay, PSA, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner McCamey.
Mr. Chairman, please, as the body, I would like to move item number 10.2, Operations Committee Report, and number 11 up to, under Commissioner Scott's PSA.
Five B and five C then, okay. Any other, any other corrections, changes? Do we have a motion to approve as amended? Commissioner McCamey?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Commissioner Wondell. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Fourteen yes, two no, motion passes. All right, next, we'll have the public hearing report. Vice Chairman Shane Vowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. During our public hearing this evening, prior to our regular monthly meeting, we had a public hearing for the rezoning of the property at 2125 Lake City Highway, Clinton, Tennessee, parcel 036.01, tax map 054 from A2, rural residential district to C1 general commercial district. Also, a public hearing for the rezoning of the property at 1101, 1106, 1110 Cove Lane, Oliver Springs, Tennessee, parcel 039, 052, 052.02, 052.03, and 052.04, tax map 084. And that was from an A2 rural residential district to an A1 agriculture forestry district. Those were the two hearings that we had prior to our meeting this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Isbell for the, to take that first, first parcel. Are you okay with that second? Commissioner McCamey? All right, so that is the, this is the motion for, what was that address?
Lake City Highway, sir.
Lake City Highway. Do we have any discussion? All right, let's go to the board, any, anyone in the audience? Okay, let's go to the board and vote. Do we have any, any motions on the, the next, next property? Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion?
Could you just tell us which one, some people at home will know.
This is Cove Lane.
Cove Lane. And that's going from A2 to A1. Commissioner Creasy.
I had an issue with the way this is developed and the planning, our building commissioners recommending it, the law director is recommending it, and we were told that the planning commission also is recommending it. That's pretty strong recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, let's go to the board and vote. Twelve yes, four no. Anything else under the public hearing?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 5A, public service announcement. Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. May is Mental Health Month. One in five adults have a mental illness. Depression is a mental illness. It's not something that a person can just simply snap out of. One in five people live with a mental illness. One in 30 experience PTSD. 8.6 million adults have suicidal thoughts. Suicide is the third leading cause of death. Suicide affects more than people are aware of. I've asked Andy to put the 800 number for the suicide hotline on our Channel 95 along with some screenshots to make people aware that there is help out there. There is a phone number for people to call. This is nothing, I'm not trying to make it personal, I'm simply making people aware that you never know who it affects or how it affects them. I wanted to thank the Commissioners for giving me time. Last month, my brother chose to escape by way of suicide. It's not something, like I said, that you can just snap out of. It's not something you can tell someone it's going to be okay because clearly, I'm not okay over it. It's something that he chose to do, but I just wanted to make people aware that there is, excuse me, a phone number that you can call for, for help and for guidance and for an ear. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner McCamey.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to announce that May is National Foster Care Month. There's over 8,000 children in the foster care system in the state of Tennessee, and the Department of Children's Services are desperately looking for anybody who would want to be a foster parent. It's a struggle sometimes, but it's also rewarding. And I'd just like to say, I've been a foster parent since 1982, had over 125 kids in my home, and we need foster parents. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to item 5B and 5C and keep the floor, Commissioner McCamey. We'll move on to the Operations Committee, or we're just going to do the report.
Commissioner Isbell.
Commissioner Chairman Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna do these out of orders, so we'll start with the veterinary director. Commissioner McCamey made a motion to authorize the mayor to hire a veterinary director to oversee operations at Animal Shelter and to install cameras to help the director see what is going on. Commissioner Mead seconded a motion. Motion passed unanimously. Therefore, the full commission for approval.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion allowing-
Commissioner Wondell made a motion to allow tourism council based on request of Stephanie Wells, Tourism Director, and her board to proceed forward with the Anderson County Chamber and ACADA to explore entering an agreement for a new building at the location presented. Commissioner Scott seconded a motion. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Commissioner Meredith.
I think Stephanie is outside. She may want to speak on this, so. I queued her up.
Can you hear Stephanie?
There she is. There she is. Sorry, we were having trouble hearing out there. I did email you all kind of step-by-step directions on what our recommendation was. I know with the last Operations Committee, there were some questions about specifically what we were asking and what would be the steps and the process that we would have to take. And I think at that meeting, Jay made comments about that we'd have to officially surplus the building, and then we would have to agree on a minimum bid, which that was in the email, our suggestion, and then we would have to have an approval to go to auction and auction the building and then proceed with selling it. And then at that point, we could... Well, also in conjunction with that, the chamber will be closing on the property that we're looking at building on. And then we sat down and kind of looked at what kind of space that we would need. We currently have about 2,100 square feet, and so we would be looking at needing about 3,000 square feet, and the email details out the needs that we would have. And then we would then go to the architect and have them design that facility. So we would only be thinking... We would only be talking about our side. The chamber will work with MBI to design their side. And I think some people have asked, will this be a 50/50 split? We don't know. All we need at this point is 3,000 square feet at a minimum. So based on what the bids come back in, that we may be able to say we could go 4,000 square feet, it's really going to decide on how much we sell the building for and how much funds we have. And then we would also bring it to our respective boards, the plans we would bring to our respective boards and to county commission for input and approval. And we would also enter into an MOU at that point on how we're going to deal with the common space and then the actual purchase price, all of those things before we break ground. So then at that point, we build the facility and move in. So I sent that information to you all on Saturday, so I hope you've had time to look at that and process it, and if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. Stephanie, you said right now you have approximately 2,100 square feet that you're working with, and you want at least 3,000 square feet?
Yes.
During one of the meetings that you attended in operations, you said that one of the reasons why you were looking to relocate and/or sell the building was because most people don't even stop at your location. They tend to phone or even email you. Why would you need more space if you've got people that are contacting you by ways of telephone lines?
Because one of the things that we do get a request for is meeting space, somewhere to have a meeting, somewhere to hold a registration for an event that we're having, somewhere for people who live in this area or visiting this area on a temporary basis, maybe somebody that's spending the summer here is looking... They're working virtually, and they're looking for office space to rent to be able to come in and have meetings in a professional place with clients. We get a lot of people that maybe staying at the lake, have a summer house there, but they don't have Wi-Fi at the lake or in some of the parts of Oliver Springs. So we are getting those kind of requests. So if you look at kind of the numbers here that I presented, we're downscaling a little bit on the lobby area and increasing it for meeting space. So our purpose has kind of changed. Our tourism has changed as far as what, you know, how you would define tourism. So we're trying to adjust with that also.
One of the suggestions that I had made to you during Operations Committee was to have smaller satellite locations, perhaps where you could have one in Oak Ridge or even out in Oliver Springs towards the Wind Rock Establishment, Rocky Top, et cetera. Personally, I don't think that you need to have one large location. I think that several satellites would be more beneficial to the people that are visiting our county. I'm going to have to vote no.
And that is an option in the future that we could look at most definitely, and there may be some ability to just share some space with other attractions in the area so that we can...
But I have issues... What I'm trying to explain to you is that I have issues with us spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to relocate your present location when you're saying that the majority of the contact is made by ways of internet and by phone. You're asking people to come from Oliver Springs to find their way through the city of Oak Ridge and through Clinton to locate you on Main Street as opposed to being right off the interstate as it is. I've got an issue with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Would this be a revenue stream kind of thing that you would charge people to use the services you just described?
Yes, and that could go to pay for some of the expenses at the facility and some of the expenses of the common space.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Creasy.
Stephanie, you said, if I heard you correctly, that the law director advised you that the property would have to be surplus, which tricked my mind into a question. I know that LeAnn handles our surplus property sales through the mayor's office, and is that the way we're going to sell it as a surplus through the mayor? The mayor's office handle that sale?
I believe... Jane, mayor, may want to step here and answer this question, but the... I believe what the intention is, is you all would authorize it to go to auction, and at that point, we would be able to look at, does the county auction it? Does the... Did we get a third party to auction it? So those would be options that we could look at. In the past, there has been the sealed bid process, which I don't think has worked out well. So we are able to have an online and a live auction. So that would be the process of, does the county do it? I've talked with purchasing. I've talked with Catherine in purchasing, and she said that has worked well in the past to get a third party to auction it.
Yeah, and maybe I misunderstand the responsibility of the mayor's office in selling surplus property, maybe to...
Tax...
Law director, or the mayor can straighten me out.
Yes, sir. Those are not surplus county properties. What they are is delinquent tax properties. The county's been forced to purchase as the default bidder in the delinquent tax sale. The mayor has a portfolio of those properties. She posts them online. Anybody can bid on them at any time. There's a process she goes through. She posts that bid, or LeAnn does, in the newspaper. You have 10 days to up it by 10 percent. That's what the mayor has on her website. Anyway, it's different. This is surplus of county property. It's handled through purchasing, and Stephanie did a good job of how it carries out.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
That cleared my mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fritz.
Just so people know that are watching or listening or anything like that, none of this involves taxpayers' dollars. This is all money generated from tourists who comes and stays in Anderson County.
Correct.
So none of this is taxpayers' money.
It's not property tax or sales tax.
Right.
Correct. Yes.
Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very quickly, if that property is sold, that money would go back into your coffers?
Yes.
You paid $300,000 originally?
Approximately, yes, with the property and the building.
And I well imagine at this point in time, with property values of the way they are, it will sell for a lot more than any $300,000. Plus, currently, that property is not paying taxes, but if sold, it would then go back on the tax rolls, would it not?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Wondell.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As... Tell me if I'm wrong, but I think what we're voting on is the motion that was read by Chairman Isbell of Operations. The motion is to explore the idea of this joint location. In this motion, there's no discussion of spending money selling a building. It's to explore. I understand Stephanie Wells, Tourism Director, has given us the information to review. It came in Saturday, as she said. So I want to be very clear, Mr. Chairman, we're not voting on selling the building unless I'm misunderstood, and we're not voting on funding anything. We're simply moving forward from the Operations Committee minutes, as our good friend Chairman Isbell has read, to allow this discussion to move forward. And that's the motion I'll be voting on. If something's different, I need to hear it. Thank you.
Do you want to restate the motion just for everybody at home?
Commissioner Wondell made a motion...
To allow the Tourism Council, based on the request of Stephanie Wells, Tourism Director, and her board, to proceed forward with the Anderson County Chamber and ACADA to explore entering an agreement for a new building at the location presented. Commissioner Scott seconded a motion. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
Yes, and I mean, that's what the motion is. These items outlined here would take additional action. So you're not voting on step 1, 2, or 3 at this time. That would take additional action.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Isbell.
And I may have missed it, but I sat on the ACADA board, and we haven't discussed it yet.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. 14 yes, 2 no. Motion passes.
I would just like to thank Commissioner Wondell for pointing that out. That was very well.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
That concludes the Operations Committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Isbell. Next, we will go to item 6, the purchasing report. Robbie Holbrook standing in for Catherine Ashmery. Oh, sorry. Commissioner Wondell.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I think the next item was 5C, Anderson County Animal Shelter. I think we moved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I thought we took...
I forgot about it, too, and he brought it. It was not a part of the Operations Committee.
Oh, okay.
Since we have folks in the audience, it felt like it might be a good idea to bring it on up to the forefront. So if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and bring up the idea of the Anderson County Animal Shelter. It was approached by many concerned animal activists and supporters and community members, and they asked if we could consider doing a new committee through the commission to maybe have it something to the effect of the Anderson County Advisory Committee for the Anderson County Shelter. And I wanted to open that discussion up to see how we could explore that process. And I'll make that a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Scott. And motion is just to form a county...
Maybe Jay, I don't know if our parliamentarian has any ideas or what the next step is, but I'd like to see, you know, 2 to 4 commissioners on it. I'd like to see some community rescue folks, concerned animal citizens, and have them all, you know, apply to it, just like any of our other committees, go in through the... What's the committee called?
Nominating committee.
Thank you. My age is catching up, Commissioner Mead. But again, I don't want to circumvent the process that we got to do it, but I think in talking to our law director, Jay Jaeger, you know, he just said briefly that that would probably be the way to do it. And, you know, I don't want anyone to feel that our county is trying to not take care of our animals. I think the mayor stepped out many years ago and built that shelter we have. No, it's not the best in the world, but she made something out of nothing, so I do recognize that. And so did many others who donated. And so, yes, we have apparently some concerns. I just want to do something that I feel would add some extra credibility to helping and helping Mr. Porter, our mayor, and the shelter to develop some strategies moving forward. I'd like to have a veterinarian on there as well. And so, that's the discussion, and I'll see if there's any ideas. Commissioner McCamey?
Commissioner McCamey.
The mayor appointed an animal welfare task force, and we met basically on a monthly basis until we got an animal shelter. And I would... We had some great people on there from different rescues, you know. Mr. Newby served on there with... Who owns 2 veterinarian clinics here in the county. I'd like to see that committee, and then we can ask the mayor if she would appoint maybe 2 or 3 other commissioners and make that a committee that will report back to full county commission. Because I'd hate to give up those people that served on it, because it was really a great group.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, that's true. That task force was formed some time ago to build the shelter. I can't explain why it went away. I understand the mayor can call the task force together at any point. We had an issue 6, 8 months ago. Task force wasn't called. We have an issue today. Task force ain't called. So as a commissioner, I think it's incumbent upon us to try to put some kind of committee in place, advisory committee, that at least provides a platform for these folks who have concerns to come to and meet in rooms like this and discuss and strategize. You know, I think what we get caught up on a lot, Commissioner McCamey, not you and me, but we want to get caught up on who did what and who's wrong, and I'm going to prove it, and I'm not picking on anybody, but I'd rather spend our time developing a strategy that saves animals. I don't have a very long tolerance for waiting for things to happen, especially when there's an issue. So I think it's fair to start a new committee. I mean, we've done it in the past. We've opened a lot of different committees. In fact, we've got a lot of committees that don't even meet no more. So it might even be well-versed to look at those and see if we need them, and this is one we need. So I've got a motion in favor of starting the Anderson County Advisory... Anderson County Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, I think. And that's my motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wondell. Any other discussion? Mayor, any... Do you want to chime in? Okay. Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Commissioner Wondell.
Turn this thing around. It still makes noise. I guess my next question is, what would be the process now? Would we send that motion...
Nominating.
...to the nominating committee? Do I need to make that a motion? I'll make it a motion just to make sure. I'll make a motion to move this request we just passed for the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee to be sent to the nominating committee to take up as quickly as possible.
Got a motion and a second. Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Wondell, how would you propose to have that made up? All of commissioners, or so many commissioners in the public? All of commissioners, or so many commissioners in the public?
Well, I mean, I think the Advisory Committee can certainly handle that task. They do a good job on that part of it. I don't want to, you're asking me a question, I'll answer. I'd like to see, as I said, two to four commissioners. I'd like to see at least four of the same number from the community, whether it's veterans, or, excuse me, veterinarians, or advocacy groups. You know, I'd like, and then let the nominating committee take applications and, you know.
The only reason I, if I may, the only reason I ask that, because I'm on the nominating committee, and what we do is just whatever is forwarded from this full commission is how we take action on it. So if, you know, if it's four, four commissioners, four people from the public, or twelve, or?
I'll, I mean, I don't know what the rest of the body, I'll, I'll say, I'm going to say three commissioners and six non-commissioners. I certainly would love to have the mayor involved. I certainly would love to have Officer Porter involved. Everyone has to be at the table, or else we're not going to get to where we need to be, in my opinion.
I would agree with having the mayor involved.
Yep.
Okay, so you want to include that in the motion, those numbers?
Sure. Three commissioners, six residents, we'll call it. Mayor, if she at her leisure, ex officio, however she'd like that capacity to be.
You okay with that? In the mo-
Oh, yes.
The motion, okay. Okay, any other discussion? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, now we're ready for the purchasing report, I believe. Yeah. Robbie? Yeah. Oh, Commissioner Fritz.
We need to advertise the positions, openings, and everything for this position? So everyone will know that this is going to be available?
Yes, yeah, we'll need to probably schedule a nominating committee meeting and figure out the timeline.
I mean, before we schedule, we'll need to make sure we advertise it.
Right, to get it posted, yeah. Commissioner Jaeger. Purchasing?
Yes.
Yes.
Are any of the contracts pending, have they been approved yet?
All have been approved now.
Commissioner Isible.
Now, we're talking about the legal contract, the Smith case recovery.
Yes, yeah. Well, we added, yeah, we added that under, under the purchasing report, so.
Okay, now are we going to go into executive session to talk about that, or?
No, I don't, I don't believe that was needed. I think that was-
Unless somebody needs to be in executive session, I don't think it was.
The reason why I was looking back at the original motion is for the law director and the mayor to work together on this. And so I haven't had any discussion with the mayor yet. But, you know, coming out of persons committee, we talked about that. But, I mean, that was our original motion. And I don't know if they have, you know, worked together on it.
Mayor, do you have any input on this? We've got, we're up against a time deadline. I know she's busy, and we've got it together, we've got contracts, and we really can't hold off.
I haven't seen it. I did reach out to me per that motion, but I have not seen it, so I don't want to comment on anything.
Commissioner McCamey.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We go into executive session at the end of the agenda, last thing on the agenda. Just to iron some things out, that there is some questions. So I'll make that in form of the motion.
Okay, I got a motion and a second by Commissioner McCamey and Isible to go into executive session at the, at the end of the regular, I guess, well, before new business. Any, Commissioner Mead.
Yeah, my concern that came up with the law director's comments about we have a timeline, we have to meet. We need to make sure that we accommodate that, because if some of these timelines on legal basis, you miss your deadline, that's it. You're, you're, it's all over. You can no longer act. So if we're going to act on this, we need to move ahead and do those things that are required to meet the guidelines, to meet the requirements for the schedule.
Commissioner Isible.
I'll, I'll just say, Mr. Chairman, that I'm not prepared and not comfortable in voting on anything like this without seeing something writing. And going forward, yeah, I've always been the nice guy. But now, and there's some other things that's happened over my last 12 years that people said, well, this is the way it's going to be, but it hadn't turned out that way.
You've got two contracts in front of you.
I know, but we're talking about on the Smith.
You've got, that was in purchasing, we've got that contract, and you've got both of them on there.
That is, but the original motion must have worked with the mayor on it.
Mayor, do you have a problem with this?
I haven't seen it, Jay. I haven't seen the contracts.
And I'm sure that we can iron it all out in executive session.
I'm sure we can.
Yeah.
I hope we can.
Okay, so Commissioner Mead.
I think recommendation that we be ready to- Call a special call meeting so we can address this, so we don't miss any timelines.
No, not a special call meeting. We've got a deadline next week on Wednesday.
To have some specific documents submitted.
Yes. There's a statute of limitations that runs next Wednesday.
So we have to do something very soon. That means like stay here tonight until it's decided.
Yeah. I have to be executive session.
Do we have any, any discussion on the motion?
We talked about it, purchasing. Everybody who's up here on committee said that they thought it was a good deal. It's much lower than what, this guy's cutting his rate over two times to help us. He's not charging us for paralegals. He's not charging us for secretarial help. It's straight up and then the contingency.
This motion is to go into executive session at the end of the meeting, the regular meeting. Any discussion on going into executive session? Let's go to the board and vote. Twelve yes, four no. Motion passes for executive session into the regular meeting. All right. Robbie?
So I'm going to assume that will be both of the legal contract recoveries in the executive session, so I'm going to leave those off the, the agenda. So under contracts approved by the law director, there are two, BMC Office Technology and Pike's Long Care for the school maintenance.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger. Approved, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Under B, contracts pending law director approval, they've all been approved now. There are, there are three of those.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and there is one under new business, the Evans-Ailey Construction for Norris Middle School. That has been approved by the law director as well.
Motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Isible. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, that's all I have for the purchasing agenda. I'll move on to the budget agenda. First, the cash and fund balance report for the general fund. Restricted funds, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, seven ninety-six. Committed funds are one point seven million. Assigned funds are three point one million. Unassigned fund balance is seven point one million, for a total fund balance of twelve point nine million. Cash is at seventeen million, eight forty-seven, seven fifty-five.
Before, before we move on, if anyone out in the hall would like to come in, we've got room now. I know there's some people that might want to speak on the, some budget items, so you're welcome to come on in.
If you want to sit down.
Commissioner Wondell.
Robbie?
Yes, sir.
Not certain, but last month, were we at nineteen million in cash?
Seven, possibly, but that was the high watermark, because since February, we always collect all the taxes. So it drops a little bit each month from there. We also did, there wa, there is actually three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars coming back to the general fund. We paid the TIFs in April, and we, when this ended, we hadn't credited back the general fund cash yet. So we have done that since. So that, there is some money that's not, that would be there, but it didn't get done before April, because we did it at the very end of the month. We had till the end of April to do, to pay the TIFs this year. So we always pay them all out of general fund, and then we credit back the general fund from like, the schools pay a majority of it, because they get more money on the tax rate. So they pay, they refund the general fund back. That's how that works, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, sales tax for March, three point, three million, four hundred and eighty thousand, five ninety-five. That, that's down four percent. The Anderson County portion, four fifty-four, four forty-seven, is down seven percent from last March, but still a very good number.
Commissioner Isible.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, can you explain to the people at home, with this tax revenue that we get in, like internet sales tax, how it's distributed percentage-wise?
Yes. So of all the sales tax, half the sale, half the sales tax is automatically goes to the schools, divided between Clinton City, Oak Ridge, and Anderson County schools. And then the Anderson County portion, half of it goes to the schools. The other half is split, excuse me real quick, let me find it on here, between the highway department and the general fund. Sixty-three percent general fund, thirty-seven percent highway, just for the Anderson County portion.
Okay. But in, in other words, the Anderson County general fund don't get the bulk of it?
No, they don't. They get sixty-three percent of half of what the county collects.
Sixty-three percent of half.
Right.
Yeah.
So if we get two hundred thousand, then we'll get a hundred and twenty-five, four, thirty thousand or so.
Okay.
And the highway department would get the, the rest of that.
All right. And I guess the other question was, and I think this is what Commissioner Wondell, and this is, I guess I got to go back and look at that, is last month, it was nineteen million in cash. And so I was just, before we spent two million. I guess that's probably the question that Commissioner Wondell had, I had.
I'll check that and let you all know in an email tomorrow. I'm not sure it was nineteen million, but it could have been. I don't, I can't remember that well.
Yeah, I think it was.
From last month, sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. If anyone finds that two million laying around anywhere, just feel free to call. Sorry.
I'll have, if it did reduce by two million, I will give you a good reason to. Group two appropriations from the school department, there are five of them, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Meredith to approve as a group. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Group threes, transfers from the school department, there are three of those, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg as a group. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Group four appropriations, non-school, there are seven of those, twenty-seven through thirty-two and thirty-five.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Wondell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Fifteen yes, one no. Motion passes.
Okay, under group five, transfers, non-school, there are three of those. Number one, which is a transfer from Fund One Twenty-One, which is ARP money for Room One Eighteen A for fifteen thousand, one eighty-two, fifty-three, and two more from the general fund for the property assessor and the finance department.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sorry, buildings, not finance.
Let's go to the board and vote. Fourteen yes, two no. Motion passes.
Group six appropriations, general fund, unassigned fund balance, there are two of those. One for conservation for the Claxton Playground, for the, for to buy more mulch, and one for the finance department.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Fritz. Any discussion? Commissioner Wondell.
I just want to let the folks know, because if somebody hears forty-five hundred dollars for mulch, they might think, what the heck's going on? That mulch is ADA compliant, is required to be ADA compliant, not only at the Claxton Kids Palace Park, but all parks even within the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. And that also, that, that allows it to be mulched annually and kind of gets a better, better coverage. That keeps us-
I'd like to thank the conservation committee. I noticed some, the new signed up, so thank you for that, too.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Commissioner Denenberg. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Under miscellaneous, group seven, the first one, under A, was the volunteer fire department stipends and gas. A motion was made to approve sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars in gas and stipend money for the volunteer fire departments out of unassigned fund balance, and approved by the budget committee.
Motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How, Robbie, how'd that break out for each department?
That's five thousand for the stipend and seventy-five hundred for gas for each of those.
Okay.
So twelve thousand, five hundred for each of those.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, intersection B, Mayor Frank presented as for discussion, a request on behalf of the mayor of Norris for two hundred thousand in funding from the ARP funds to help address sewer system deficiencies. There was no action taken on this. It was just a discussion in the budget committee. In section C, I don't know if anybody has any questions about that, but I'm, if not, I'll move on to section C. The senior center, senior centers construction project, a request for a hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars in funding to complete the kitchen at the senior sending, centers. Funding would come from the American Rescue Plan funds. The motion was made by Commissioner Smallridge and seconded by Commissioner Creasy for approval, for recommendation, recommendation for approval to county commission.
Got motion and a second. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, I'm trying to get back to it here. So the ARP funds.
Yes, sir.
I guess some of my concern is, we seem to start to be just kind of going through the process of, it looks like we're going to have things brought to us here, and then we're going to vote to pass it. Before we get much deeper in spending, I see it went down to seven point three million. I think was the number I saw. We, we haven't got the second check yet, right?
No, sir.
And that's another seven point-
Six.
Six.
I think.
So I guess my question, Mr. Chairman, is, I, I, you know, we had one meeting, I think it was, ARP public meeting. I think good friend Commissioner Jaeger headed it up, a public hearing. I, I'd like to see some more of that, because I think the ones that get left out in having a voice in it is the community. I don't think they fully understand how we're spending this money. I, I had, and I know Commissioner Fritz, I ran into a gentleman in the Gatston Town area this weekend, and, you know, he was asking about the sewer. He hated to hear that Commissioner Fritz wasn't going to be running again. And he actually felt like there would never be another option to get sewer again without Commissioner Fritz around. And, and I can understand why he says that. Commissioner Fritz is- And, and, and I can understand why he says that, Commissioner Fritz has done an awful lot of work in our community and certainly appreciate it. So, I guess what I'm saying, before we start just kind of easing this money out and different things, I, I'd like to have more of a workshop to kind of really get, get the community involved. You know, we also had some discussions, Robbie, about money, I don't know if it came out of the ARP funds, but money for the, uh, the cable, internet?
Yes.
And, and I don't know what happened. I don't know if we cut checks for that, or it's in process?
We haven't yet. We made a commitment, I think, but we've not been asked for the money yet.
So is that money earmarked in the fund, or is it just kind of?
It hasn't been yet, no, sir.
So, all of those things start adding up.
That's correct.
As you know better than anybody. Um, so, I, I'd like to hear some discussion on what everyone thinks we should, I, I'm gonna support this, obviously, uh, these motions, because it's already been talked about, it's already been brought to the finance. But before we get much further in spending the remaining seven point three million, I'd like to have more input and understand. So at least, at a minimum, Mr. Chairman, I can go tell the community, okay, this is what it's being used for. I'd like to see some of the funds, and I, I, I know seven point three is a lot of million, a lot, but it goes pretty quick when you start putting it out there. And I, I'd like to have some consideration for water sewer over there in Claxton. It's been since probably twenty-twelve or so, Chuck, when, last time we did something over there for sewer, that is. And, and, and at that time, we were supposed to add on to it and, and take it further, but, um, anyway, that's just, I'd like to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jaeger.
I'd like to follow up on that. Um, we, we did have a, a brief discussion on the.
I asked, I asked Robbie to recreate that, uh, critical needs and important, I can't remember the, all the designations, but I think we need to revisit that so that we don't, five hundred thousand dollars here or there, and, you know, then we can't have the actual things done that we need done, like ambulances and fire trucks and water sewer, all those things. So, um, I think that's an important thing, too, because we're, we're spending this money without a real, without a real plan. And, uh, I know we've talked about getting another meeting going and we're, what'd you say, like July, back, because of budget and all that?
I, I mean, I'm, I would love to have another meeting, I think it's time, because I do realize we're bringing a lot of these different requests each month.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I want you all to have more, you know, the input in the decisions. So, I mean, any, I'm available any month.
All right. I'll, if, if it's okay, I'll get with Robbie and we'll try to finalize, and the mayor, and try to finalize another meeting before we get, before it gets away from us.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
Commissioner Fritz.
At one time, when, especially when, like, when the last time we had that meeting, a lot of the talk and discussions were made that, uh, there's gonna be more opportunities, uh, outside the, not only this check, the second check, but there's gonna be more opportunities, uh, for grants pertaining to, uh, water and sewer. Is that still the talk and the things that, uh, that options are still gonna be on, on the table and available?
Yes, that's correct. If I'm not mistaken, it'll be more than five million or more, yes.
So, uh, we get that grant coordinator in here, uh.
Well, it was approved tonight, so.
Uh, really help, uh, pursue that, that area there.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm not one to take too. In you, I mean, uh, rumor, thank you very much, Brain, but I had heard regarding the senior center that there's an issue with air conditioning. Is that something that needs to be constantly looked at before we go forward with a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on a kitchen?
So, um, I'm sorry, I'm getting my allergy. Some allergy drainage. Um, the, we met on site with the architects, um, a couple of weeks ago, and they're going to get back with me on, um, the original design had anticipated, um, increasing the size of an air unit that serves the kitchen area, because once you get into cooking and vents and all of that, so I believe that was part of that plan. Um, we do have a small unit that serves the room where they, uh, play cards and do some of the programming study and puzzles and that kind of thing, where the compressor is out. So currently, I'm getting quotes for a, that new unit. Um, so I'm in the quote process right there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Creasy.
Yeah. Commissioner Wondell is making good contributions tonight, and I certainly appreciate that. I hate to leave him. He's doing a good job and been a good commissioner. I like his talk about involving the public and especially from Gatsden Town. There's a great people over there and, and they need your help and Mr. Fritz. And this commission, um, I tried to get the sewer in that area some years ago. I know what a struggle it was then, so, you know, keep up the hard work over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Wondell?
Just, uh, I thought there was some discussion last time, with something about, I think Commissioner Camby said there is a twenty-six thousand dollar grant that came through for seniors or something. Is that being used in conjunction with this, or?
Well, um, on the kitchen, a lot of the equipment that is not ordered yet is not part of this cost. So, that, those grant funds would be used to purchase the range, the vent hood, some of those things that are not part of the construction process, so, yes. Then we have another one that they're, um, they've actually applied for, um, that hopefully we'll get, that will add additional funds.
I understand construction's variable.
Yes.
Do you have any idea of kind of timeline for this?
I just heard, um, from Stacy Cox with Studio For Design, um, this weekend, who said he's still a couple of weeks out on, uh, he's working with Jenkinson Style. Uh, I think the man's name is, um, the principal is Mr. Bryson, I think. Um, he had checked in with him and he said he's still a couple of weeks out on finalizing, uh, absolute, you know, last details.
So all the stuff in the kitchen will be gone somewhere else, I imagine?
Yes, yes.
Did, did you have any luck on the, and I appreciate hearing this update on kitchen, it's, that's gonna be great. Any updates on the signs? I think I saw some signs on, on the, on the, I forget the highway that is from Clinton, Oak Ridge, but, uh, Gary, did you put those signs up?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. And are we still gonna get signs on the building?
Yes, uh, Christie Carroll is gonna get us one that's going to be, uh, in the interim before we, um, get what we want with like a little wall and, and more formal lettering. She's going to do something on that, um, existing, you know, there's a, it looks like a piece of a gate where Faith Promise used to have something in that little landscaping area, so, yes.
Awesome. And I just want to say, on the sign that Gary put up, he's, he was limited, I'm pretty sure, to the state right away, he couldn't really probably put too big a sign. So I just appreciate, put some directional signs up there, and Mayor, you helping with that, whatever, uh, it's just good to, a lot of people ask, where is it? They just don't know where it's at, believe it or not, so, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, let's go to the board and vote. Fifteen yes, one no. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Under section D, the twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budgets, the budget committee, the first item on the agenda, they adopted the school budget after Dr. Parrott made a small presentation. Commissioner Jamison and seconded by Commissioner Smallridge to, to accept the proposed school budget for one forty-one. Then a motion was passed unanimously to accept budgets, um, Fund One Sixteen Solid Ways, Fund One Thirty-One Highway, One Forty-Three Cafeteria, One Fifty-One, the General Debt Service, One Fifty-Two, the Rural Debt Service, One Fifty-Six Educational Debt Service, One Seventy-One, General Capital Projects, One Seventy-Seven Ed- Educational Capital Projects, and the Two Sixty-Three Self-Insurance Fund. Also, um, there was a plan to, um, they adopted a plan to address the Fund One Sixteen deficit of a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, and we moved a penny from the One Seventy-One Fund to the One Sixteen Fund, and that, um, made up for the difference. And a penny brings around a hundred and ninety-four thousand now. They also addressed, the budget committee, the EMS One Eighteen Fund deficit of around eighty-five thousand dollars, and they decided to use their fund balance to absorb the deficit and possibly pay their capital needs with ARP money. And the last thing on the budget agenda was the determined employee compensation rate. The budget committee gave a five percent increase to Anderson County employees that had not received approval for a raise in the Twenty-Two, Twenty-Three budget, and that passed also unanimously. And that's all I have for the budget committee. There'll be just, next month, June ninth is the public hearing, that notice is in the paper this week. The twentieth, the budget will go to commission. And, um, I was tell, I, talking to Shane earlier tonight, Commissioner Val, about possibly setting up another additional commission date, just in case the budget's not passed on the twentieth, for that Thursday of June twenty-third as a second date in June.
The public hearing for the budget is June ninth, and that's?
That is Thursday, budget meeting, it'll be right before the budget meeting's held.
Okay. At, at, uh?
At four o'clock, yes, sir.
Four o'clock in Room Three Twelve.
This room, One Eighteen A.
Okay, just for.
No, not One Eighteen, this room right here, sorry.
For everybody at home, okay. And Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and I probably should have brought this up under purchasing, but, you know, I'm always talking about return on investment. Our finance director and our purchasing agent saved us fifty-three thousand dollars on our fire truck for Andersonville.
Yes, that is what Catherine reported on that in purchasing committee.
That's fantastic, versus what, you know, what was, what was said, you know, that, how much it was gonna cost. But they went together and saved fifty-three thousand dollars. That's tremendous. Good job. And, and the other thing was, it was nineteen million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars last month. That's what was on our cash.
Okay. I will find out what happened to that two million dollars.
Did a good job.
Yes. Thank you. Commissioner Jaeger?
Thank you. I want to back up for a second on, um, the employee compensation rate increase. I'm not gonna argue about it, but it was unanimous vote, but that's only, that was only four people. I just want to make that clear. We had two abstentions and two absences. So, four of the eligible voting were in favor, so it was half a budget, but unanimous with an asterisk in my, in my opinion.
I'm glad you pointed that out.
And we've got, and, and I apologize, I thought that might get pulled out or, or discussed more, but we've got some people here, I think, that maybe wanted to talk about that.
That's fine. And just so, we, the budget can never be voted on by commission until we have the public hearing. It can change after the public hearing, because I know the first year I did budget, with, after Natalie resigned, we probably changed it five or six times after the public hearing. But we have to have the public hearing and then the commission, you know, votes to reject or approve the budget. And it can change in budget committee next, next month, even after the public hearing, but, uh, there's still a lot of possibilities.
Okay.
Robbie, do you need a motion for that date?
Yes, if, please.
Motion by Commissioner Val, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg.
June twenty-third, Thursday?
And if we don't, if we don't need the meeting, it can be canceled.
Four o'clock?
For commission?
The twenty-third?
That could be six, I guess, normal commission time.
And this is the, this is gonna be the date for the, just a hypothetical date, if we need to have another meeting. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Under section E, new business, um, we've already passed a budget amendment. It was a transfer that was done on behalf of EMA, and that's all the business I have for the budget committee. Anybody has any more questions?
Questions from Harvey? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We've got the Director of Schools, Dr. Parrott?
Thank you. As always, it's a pleasure to, uh, come and talk about the school system, and, uh, if you have any questions about the budget, please just send me an email and, or call me, and, uh, we'll go have a donut some, and we'll talk about it. But anyway, just to let you know also, uh, this month is Teacher Appreciation Month. The school board did a resolution for our teachers, and, uh, our teachers, uh, received, uh, a group of them received Above and Beyond Award. That money's through our U Trust account. Thank everyone who attended the first of, uh, two graduations at Anderson County High School last Friday night. It rained all around us, but we got it off and, uh, had about two hundred and sixty-five graduates. This Friday night, we'll be at Clinton High. Come on down, the tickets are free. So, you know, it, it was amazing when we used to have to give tickets, you know? This will be the first year that we don't really have to worry about the field being wet, because we have the turf on there, so we're excited about that. The, another thing that, uh, Clinton High School was just designated a STEM certified school by the State of Tennessee. They went through a, a real rigorous application process, had a group come in and tour the school, and they had to answer questions, and they, and they talked to the students and the staff, talked to community members and things like that, and, uh, they were really impressed with our schools, so we're excited about that STEM certification.
Just give them an ad lib.
The, uh, other thing is, I want to thank the commissioners that came out for the, uh, site visits. If you did get a chance to come and visit our schools, please let me know, and we will make arrangements for you to come out and, uh, just visit our schools. We're proud of our schools and principals. Uh, would love to have you come and see what's going on inside of our schools. Uh, last but not least, Anderson County High School baseball is playing tonight in the regional, and Clinton High School softball is playing tonight in the regional. So, we wish both of them good luck.
Hook 'em horns.
Any questions?
I was waiting for somebody to say, go Dragons.
Go Dragons.
Where's the backup here, boys? Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, Dr. Parrott, I, I, I know it's, everyone's time's limited, but I want to thank you for the opportunity to go visit the school. Something I don't normally take time to do, but when you get an offer from your director of schools, uh, you kind of want to try to make it. And I can't tell you how eye-opening it was for myself to go through Claxton Elementary with the principal and see these young kids working hard, and, and I can honestly say, it wasn't staged. She would open up a door, and every, every class we went into, they were reading, they were engaged, and I just want to say thank you. And I guess one of, that's impressive in itself, but when we went past the cafeteria, uh, she said to me that her cafeteria is the best in the county, and it certainly smelled like that. So we went in there and I could not believe how clean it was. I mean, it, it was unbelievable. It looked like a brand-new, I know it's not, but, uh, I just want to say thank you. I hope we can continue that effort. You know, maybe twice a year or something. I'd, I'd like to do that, if, if I get back in, so thank you for doing it.
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will you share the grant announcement from Friday?
Yes, we also, uh, glad you said that, there was a couple of things. We had, uh, worked with the TCAT of Knoxville and got a give grant, and the give grant is over a million dollars, and what it will allow us is, is Anderson County Career and Technical Centers partnering with TCAT of Knoxville, which, it says Knoxville, but it's really right across the street, and we'll be having a, uh, having a new one of, yeah. Pole, I want to say it's, it's industrial maintenance and they will be, it's called lineman.
Limon's class.
I wanted to call it climbing a pole, but that's probably not the right word to say, but anyway, and, and we're working on a space to put that. And, and I want to tell you, I, they were talking about how many hundreds of thousands of dollars. And, and I want to tell you, they were talking about how many hundreds of thousands of dollars that our students had received in free education just this year. And that is great to have that partnership with TCAT of Knoxville. And it's a testament to Anderson County as a whole, because if we didn't have the industry, we didn't have the support, that, that new facility would have never been built there. The other thing, I know it's already, the voting is already passed, but our middle school, we're going to find out who does, who wins the dream it do it tomorrow. And our middle schools in Clinton, Anderson County and Oak Ridge did a fantastic job of doing them. So if you get on the chamber side, I think you can still see the videos that our middle school kids did. But I think that's tomorrow at 9:00 at TCAT.
Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too just want to thank Dr. Parrott for the opportunity to come and go through schools. I did not take advantage of actual tour of a school, but I hope to do that in the future. But I do want to say how impressed I was with the tour that we did take at Anderson County High School. And I am begging you to please let me know when that new 3D printer that prints food comes in, because I want to see that sucker work.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Yankel.
I also want to follow up on schools. When I first came on commission, I called a number of grade schools in the Anderson County system, asking if I could take a tour. And the principals just love for people to take tours of their schools. They're so proud of it. And I've, I've been to all but two of them now. And I encourage anybody to call. They just love when people come to, come there to show off.
Yes. Commissioner Yankel.
Mr. Chairman. Dr. Parrott, as I told you Friday night.
You know, I'm in my 12th year as commission, so I've attended every one of the Anderson County graduations. And some of those children are the ones that came across and they did a terrific job speaking. The students, Ms. Couples, I mean, she was the best one I've ever heard.
Right, yes. A great child.
Anyway, those students as graduating, I remember going and reading to them and the Dr. Seuss for the first grade. And for what this commission has done, support our school system, you know.
Yes, y'all did a great job.
Thank you.
Correct me if this number's wrong. Was it $9 million that got awarded at Anderson County?
Over $9 million in scholarships, yes, that they were awarded.
Yeah. And that was just, was that just at ACHS?
Yes.
Commissioner Fritz.
I'm sorry, I missed all the tours and everything. I was in Pennsylvania and New York. But I do want to let you know that it seems like you hit a home run with the principal for Clinton Middle School, because I have received all kinds of comments, calls and everything about the selection that you all made for that school. And it seems there's a lot of excitement behind her and it looks like that school's going to be moving forward.
Yes, April Myers will be taking over as principal of Clinton Middle School, starting next year. She's actually been in our school system over 20 years, did the fellowship with University of Tennessee in leadership, and she's been over there as the dean of students this year. She was there before as academic coach. Thank you for that. I think she'll really do a great job. Rayanne Owens will be moving into a position with our nutrition under Ms. Burrow. And hopefully at one time, everybody, everybody retires at one time, but when Ms. Burrow gets ready to retire, we'll have somebody step into that position, so you don't miss a beat.
Commissioner Scott.
Dr. Parrott, are you going to continue with doing the principal for a day?
Yes, yes, the principal for a day. We actually, because of the pandemic and everything, we didn't, but we've already got that set up and that's through Anderson County Leadership, and then they'll have other people that will come in to do it that day.
I enjoyed it when I did it.
Yes.
Thank you.
I remember you fussed at me about some books that day. Had to go buy some new books, though. I always like to try to do better, so.
Any other questions, comments for Dr. Parrott?
Thank you all.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
County Mayor, Mayor Frank.
I have no action items this evening, Mr. Chairman. I do have an announcement that we sent out to the press today for the new Wolf Valley Convenience Center. The current location will be closed on May 31st, so we're encouraging folks to drop off their trash during the weekend of the 27th and 28th, or on Monday, the 30th. Then they will engage in the process of moving the equipment over to the new site, which is planned to be open on June 1st. So, long time coming, but that's going to happen. You want a ribbon cutting?
Yes.
Okay. We will schedule a ribbon cutting. And then just, I real quickly want to say a couple of things on the animal issue. I wanted to have in your hands a printed copy of the RFP that LeAnn and I have worked on to put together for the veterinary director. In the state of Tennessee for EMS, there's actually a requirement that you have a medical director as your oversight for your policies, procedures. And this we're doing as an option, but maybe we'll end up doing what Anderson County does in many occasions, is we end up being a leader on some of these issues. And I think it makes good sense to do that and have a vet in a paid position who can approve our policies and procedures and, and, you know, our best practices. Part of that RFP, and I will, LeAnn's grandma died, so she wasn't here. She's not going to be here for a couple more days. But, so my intent was to send it, but once she's back, we'll get that email to you, because she did the typing portion of it. And then our, what we envision, if you all are good with it, is also an onsite visit. We can do this through consulting, so we're not hiring someone full-time and putting that entire cost on it, but with the ability to meet from time to time and determine if there are more hours needed. So I wanted to say that. And I also want to say, you know, we have walked through this process together in my time here in Anderson County Government with this commission. And I want to thank you for getting us as far, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of emotional about this, I don't think I've ever cried in front of, for the commission. But I think, I'm sorry. You know, we have been in a facility that had, we were in a surplus shed for the cats. And thank you to Dr. Smallridge for really being an advocate on that issue and this commission for supporting funding. We're still not where we need to be in that facility, but we've come a long way. And I do want to share just the euthanasia numbers and the reality of what, of what we've dealt with. In 2016, and I want to show you, share with you, the cats here, in 2016, we took in 276 cats. In 2017, 457. In 2018, 527. In 2019, 460. In 2020, 615. In 2021, 697 cats in that little cat house. And the dogs, in 2017, well, in 2021, we took in 482 dogs. In 2020, we took in 400 dogs. I mean, these are fast clips of growth at our shelter. And I want to share with you just the euthanasia, what we were looking at in 2017. We euthanized 24% of the dogs and 71% of the cats. 71% of the cats. In 2016, 28% of the dogs we euthanized and 69% of the cats. And we have made many advances, and that's with your help and when I come to commission with PetSmart, you approved that contract. That has absolutely turned the numbers around on the cats. For 2021, we euthanized 10% of the dogs. And do we want to? No, absolutely we do not. And I'm willing to work with whoever to continue to improve and to lower those numbers. The cats, 17%. And I have never not disclosed to this commission, especially at the Budget Committee level, you know I've shared this, one of the challenges with cats is there aren't a lot of rescue organizations for cats. And the reclaim numbers tell this story as well. In 2021, we took in a total of 1,179 animals. The dogs, we placed 38%. Reclaimed by owners were 28%. To rescues, we sent 24%. Cats, we adopted 60%. And a lot of that is PetSmart. It's people being, going there to shop for their pets and then they see another pet in need of a home. And a lot of times, people don't come to a shelter for that reason, because they don't know what's going to happen to the other cat that's there or to the other dog, and they end up wanting to take them all home. So I really credit them with, with a lot of that. But the reclaims for cats are only 2%. People aren't out there looking for their lost cat. And to rescues, 20%. We did have an escapee, which if they're feral, that can happen if you don't have... So we, actually, when we had that shed, they would get up in, in the roof and, you know, we had more escapees back then. But anyhow, I do want to share that with you all, that we are trying and, you know, I also want to share this important thing that you all really don't know, but in 2019, January 14th, our Animal Control Department seized six Wymeriners that were being abused. We could not brag on ourselves and jeopardize the case being prosecuted by the District Attorney General. We couldn't do anything to risk that. But we had those animals for 513 days. The owner refused to relinquish. The court tried to convince him to relinquish those dogs. 513 days, those six Wymeriners were in our shelter. That means during January 14th, 2019, to June 16th, 2020, those were six runs that were taken. So those numbers I'm sharing with you on the other dogs that were adopted and came through and were reclaimed, we did that with six runs. And that took partnership with rescues in the community. It took foster homes. It took a lot of phone calls and transports. But we were successful in that particular case. I think the particular individual is, may still be with Shane at the detention facility on another charge, which involved a charge against a human, not animals. So I do want to share some good news. You know, it, we would love zero. We would love zero. We're working on it. We want to continue to work on it. We've been working on the shelter and we hope to get to a better place. But I did want to share with you, those trend lines have been moving in the right direction. Not so much for cats, but for three years in a row, we've, we've met the no-kill status for dogs. But they look at the total numbers, which is dogs and cats combined and for your facility. So I did want to share that, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a couple of follow-up questions for me. If you've got any updates on the camera, if you could share the camera purchasing your updates?
I haven't even started that. I mean, yeah.
And on the, on the...
There's, I will say this, that's going to take some work with IT, because we do not have, there is, I mean, it's very, it's just a very subpar location. It does not have all those amenities, doesn't have sewer. Brian actually had to kind of, if you want to talk about what you had to rig together to even get us phone and technology down there.
Yeah, the, the structure simply was not addressable by Comcast and the other vendors in that vicinity. I believe, as a matter of fact, I've had to pull some strings to get, the internet that is there now is literally in the solid waste facility. And we've strung wire across and under and above and across over to the cat house and to the other buildings, so that that facility has internet. It is functional. It does provide them with connectivity. We will probably need to invest in better product for that facility to make it acceptable to handle that kind of traffic and bandwidth, to handle video. That's never been attempted out at that facility. I'm not saying it's impossible, I'm saying we'll probably have to make an investment for that to occur, but that will be coming shortly.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? I don't have on that. I wanted to follow up on the euthanasia rates with the mayor real quick. This just, and it sounds like we're making great strides on that, but this is just one of the things that I kept hearing multiple times, where different counties, I don't know, cook the books or work the numbers some way to kind of get the, the rates they want. Like, some counties say we're no-kill, but they, they don't count feral cats in the numbers, so they euthanize them. Other, and I, I've heard this several times, and obviously I know there's an investigation and I know, maybe you can't comment on everything, but the, the dogs or cats or whatever it is get brought straight in and they bypass intake and get euthanized. So if they're not, if they're not brought into intake, then they're, if they're not processed, then it doesn't count towards the numbers. So if you've got anything you could respond to that with, I think people would appreciate it.
I don't know, I don't know how other shelters do it. I do know, I mean, there is a, there is a large debate, gosh, nationwide. I mean, you, you know, I look back, my mom and aunt were in this business. We used to gas animals and, and, you know, there were places where you would back the car up and the fumes come into a chamber and that's how animals were euthanized. In, I believe it was 2015, they actually ended that, you know, practice of gassing, not with a car, but the no-kill debate, I mean, there are debates from, is that the appropriate language even? Because if you say it's no-kill, does that mean the ones that are euthanized humanely are killed? And there's even debate within the shelter community, some prefer to even use that terminology because it keeps them sensitive and it keeps that as a reminder to them that they are taking a life. The no-kill goal, they still allow for that definition is, I believe is 10% or less. And that allows for aggressive animals or sick animals. I don't know so much about the feral, that's new to me, that being a way to bypass, but I'm happy to look into that.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Fritz.
I was going to say first, I was going to ask about the convenience center, but you took that away from me, because I've had so many people ask me, "When are we going to open it up? When are we going to open it up?" But I will say, you know, I did stop by the animal shelter when a lot of this first started and went down there and looked at and talked to. When we first started this animal shelter, I mean, it wasn't really what you say an animal shelter, it was just a little holding facility where we just, a place where the animal control could take animals and hold them until we could either take them to Oak Ridge or, then it was, it was wrong county. And they handled it. But the, we have made great strides with what situations we have over there and what room we have over there. If we as a commission wants that animal shelter to be run, other than a little holding facility, and that's what we have right now, is just a small holding facility until we can maybe get the cats or whatever to PetSmart and, or find the dogs to another place, then we're going to have to put some more funding into that place to, to change it into something more than just a holding facility and, and treat, and to do, treat it otherwise. I think the big question is, you know, how, you know, what small percentage of the euthanasia was done, you know, how were they were done? I can't answer that.
Yes, correct.
And that's something that needs to be questioned, but we are making great strides down there. When I went down there, they had three dogs that, they had things even out from the gates, whatever, they said, "You can't, don't get nowhere near to it." They were considered vicious. And by state law, you, we can't adopt those, because they attack the humans or whatever and until we, you got to hold them for... and till we, you got to hold them for so long and make sure, you know, they meet certain guidelines. But by state law, you can't send them out for adoption.
Right.
They have to be euthanized. So, that goes against us, you know, unfortunately. They showed us, they showed me the situation with the feral cats. You got small kittens, but you can't work with them. But then they showed me adult cat. They had to put on these big, heavy mitts, whatever, try to go in there and get it to just try to pet it a little and it attacked them, you know. And they said, you know, when you got an adult feral cat, it's not much you can do, you know. I mean, they, they're so, it's too late. And so, but maybe with a small kitten, you can, but with that adult feral. So, I mean, you got so, your hands so much tied on to it. But us being just a small holding facility, we don't do all the other programs that a lot of the large facilities do. And what we do down there, they do a tremendous job, other than, again, I don't know how they do the other part. And that's something that I probably need to be looked at, addressed and stuff. But what they showed me down there and what they're doing, I had an eye-opening thing. Especially when they went through the whole process and showing me everything they did and things that are going on. But that one thing, I can answer, you know.
Sure, right. We're looking at that.
Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. Mayor, the state of Tennessee is showing that the license for the Anderson County Animal Control expired as of the 28th of February. What's the status?
I would have to ask Brian when the inspection is due. We had, while he was out on medical leave, the state of Tennessee called to schedule the inspection and forwarded it to him, so.
While he was out, or?
Yes, yes. So, I believe he called. I'd have to look it up. The state inspector called on something like April the 11th. We paid our renewal timely, but we don't control when they call for the inspection.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to the Law Director report. Questions for Jay? We'll go to, we've already done everything on Operations Committee. Is that right? Let's skip that. And we'll do Intergovernmental Report. Chairman Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Intergovernmental Committee. Met on May 9th. Present members were Catherine Denenberg, Tim Isbell, Bob Smallridge, Shane Vowell, and Tracy Wondell. Members absent, excuse me, Josh Anderson. Others present, Terry Frank and Jay Yeager. Chairman Denenberg called the meeting to order. No since addressed the committee. Commissioner Wondell read a letter in response to an email he sent to EPA Administrator Michael Reagan. American Nuclear Update. Commissioner Wondell made a motion to draft a letter to EPA, Region 4, and TDEC to express our gratitude to the response and respectfully request to gain understanding on how American nuclear can be cleaned up and that we stand ready to work with EPA and TDEC to make that happen. Commissioner Isbell seconded the motion. Motion passed to forward to full commission for approval. I so moves.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell. Second by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? Let's go to the Board and vote.
That concludes the Intergovernmental Report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion passes unanimously. And we've done the Animal Shelter Committee request. So, I guess this time we'll go, get ready to go into executive session. Yeah, let's do a, let's take a 10-minute recess to get the room ready for executive session. Then we'll come back for new business and old business and adjournment.